Evening everybody. Welcome to our council meeting on the 4th of November. Lovely to see you all. Okay, unfortunately, the mayor is delayed, so he should be here within about ten fifteen minutes. So you're gonna have to put up with me in the interim. Everybody got the agenda, the pack minutes, digested it? Fantastic, okay. So there's the welcome apologies for absence, Anne.
Yep, we've got Chancellor Fraser, Chancellor Taylor and Deputy Commissioner.
Fantastic, thank you. No other apologies. Okay, declarations of interest. This is to receive and consider declarations of interest in the items below. And also to receive and consider dispensations in respect to the disclosive community interests. Are there any? Take that as a no. That leads us swiftly on to item four. And these gentlemen behind me who are gonna give an informative presentation.
Well, I'm not sure about that.
I'm sure you will. What I'll do is I'll get out of the way. I'll let you introduce yourselves.
Good evening, good evening on the line. She's interesting matches to the photo. Some of us are on a spot images, some of us use ones from ten twenty years ago, Ian. I'm sure I'm free on the less handsome one set when I was a photo, didn't know what they are. And I'm probably managing this scheme for Dr Sanjay who shares tomorrow night. You're gonna hear from Sanjay in a second now. But Sanjay is chairman of passing every care. They are the applicant for the proposal about how to work care. Apologies in advance if any of you have heard this before. Handoff if you're really bored of me and this. Okay, we were handoff, you've seen this before. Thank you, I know you have. So yeah, it hasn't changed, but for those of you that haven't, we'll we'll run through it again and we'll talk about the changes. So I think we've been back here some sort of three times now. And but thank you very much for having us. The reason we're doing this is to share with you our proposal before it goes in front of Breton District Council. Possibly later this month for determination. If they can slip us in this month, they will. If not, we're definitely on for December. So it's that close now, but it's taken a long while getting that. So the idea of the scene is to tell me why, tell me why it's taken so long, tell me what could change, what we've done and where we are now. And so that's who we are. The background is very simple. We probably can't see these where you're sitting, but you'll be aware as much as anyone at care in particular. Eddie was spoken before. We have a demographic reality which is aging society in the country and particularly in Norfolk. There is the lines on these histograms that show that a normal distribution curve for the age of society will be where these white lines are. Unfortunately, in Norfolk, we've got many people older, male and female, living in our county. So we've got a greater need for later living, better living care, unfortunately dementia care too, which is just a harsh reality. And it's going to get even greater as we wind for the next twenty years. Two few of our homes are fit for purpose and we can do better than that. Sanjay, we're with you working on four current home schemes, but you've already got a number of existing homes. Do you want to talk about those?
Yeah, sure. So so cost medical care is a well established family run organisation that's based in Norfolk. And twenty twenty four is a very special year because it marks our twenty fifth anniversary, which we will be celebrating. And what we've really done is that we have grown really quite steadily over the last twenty five years. And what really sits at the heart of what we do is trying to put people first. And so we haven't actually rushed, we actually just grown organically. And many of the things that what we've done is that we've tried to push boundaries. And I think what we have now in Atterborough is a perfect opportunity to really to push something that's going to be quite special. And it's going to be the first one in Norfolk as well. And but just to top everything off is at just the end of last year. So so we managed to achieve a national award as being recognised, having one of the best cave homes in the UK. So that was a real testimony that what we are doing is that we are really pushing the boundaries. And we believe that Atterborough is the identification is to push the boundary as well.
That's it. So the Atterborough is what we're talking about this evening, but just out of interest, saw you the other homes, like Castle Medical Care operator on the right hand side. And the other schemes that are coming forward is the one at Halesworth, which Robert's been working on with us and with Ian. And so Woodgate Park in Sponseton Morley at, I've done that twice, Colby Hall. And Atterborough, you mentioned like today, Colby Hall in Norwich. They're not really too relevant today because they're different point of expedition, so you know, there's a lot in that. But what you do want to hear about is Atterborough. And Robert, you're pretty definitely want to tell us where we were, where we are and the things that have changed. Robert, Robert is managing partner at Bilton Wilson, Mark Dex, and get this right, Norwich, London, Cambridge, Prague.
That's correct, so. Not every day.
No.
Good evening, everybody. As I said, I've started with a slide which is is where we were. And I'm quite aware that some of you have seen it before. But just to 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 talk through the railway station, it's it's whatever requirements across. We've got an entrance to the site where we have flats and retail units, a care home, a retirement centre, a village hub and then bungalows. And back back then, when we started, we had some market housing in in this area. So we were very conscious of the circulation and we worked closely with highways back then to actually try and get the balance right densities and that sort of thing. And the the look and feel of the site. And so we've always had had your support as a town council as we've we've gone through the process, which we're very much appreciative of. Kind of sometimes I think, well, what have we been doing for the last year and a half in terms of actually the development of the scheme? Because I'll show you the things haven't actually changed that much. This is a little bit of a technical drawing, but it actually focuses on where we are now. I'll summarise the accommodation changes a little bit later, but you'll see the principle of the circulation of the site is exactly the same. The locations for each of the areas of accommodation is is the same. But there's been much more focus on the technical side, the actual surface water attenuation of drainage and the and the open landscape area. So we now have considerably more open space. We have more wetland type areas, but we have a similar layout that we we had had previously. The front of the site is is exactly the same, just with a modification where where the market housing was in this particular section of the of the site. That's now now more of the bungalows, which is seen as more relevant to to the site itself. These two plans are very similar, but this is actually the the landscape plan. As I said, we've we've really focused on the in the outside of the the spaces outside the the buildings. And I think this portrays just how much emphasis has been put on the landscape and the and the open areas. We're very keen to make sure it is as open as possible and as green as possible. And so we've worked very closely with the the landscape offices and the and and the drainage engineers. So touched on accommodation and this is the where we were, where we are. It's actually five percent less building space than there was previously. And the adjustment really has been, we've got additional bungalows and we've got no houses as I as I touched on. And there's an increase in the market flats in the front of the site. But other than that, there's no real changes to to the accommodation. And say it's very much being a a transition as we've we've moved forward. So we've actually had a very good relationship with the the planning offices. Architects often quite critical where planners try to interfere with what schemes look like. And we've actually made a few modest adjustments to the elevations. And so I've just got a few images just to capture where we are. For some of you also, aren't they the same as they were before? They're very, very similar to where where we were before. It's been things like we had a combination of brick colours and this sort of thing previously. Now they ask for one main colour, for example. But this is the the view of the the entrance to the site, the retail units on the right and the market flats on the left hand side. As we move into the development itself, so the edge of the flats, you can see we're approaching the actual care home, which is the heart of the actual development itself at at this point. The main care home building itself, so there's no changes to to these in terms of the the look and feel and the materials. There's a few details and a slight adjustment in 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 the layout. But so most of these are, as we've demonstrated previously. So the village, the village hub has made a a transition, but very much at the heart of the actual development is the community. And so the actual hub itself is expanded slightly in terms of the offer and things that are available. But it's very much as saying the village centre or the community centre as part of the development itself. And so we've looked to try and really focus on this as a sort of centre point where everybody will actually hopefully be attracted attracted to. And then finally, this is just to the to emphasise the relationship between the bungalows and the actual care care centre itself. So it's, as I said, very, very much a community. And they'd say the only real change has been the taking out of the market housing and replacing with additional additional bungalows at this time. So. Thanks on to Ian. Ian, partner at Good World, the man in charge of planning for everybody in East of England at scenes. Where are we in terms of planning?
Yeah, I was just briefly touching on where we are with with planning. The description of development is on the is on the screen. You can see the various different uses that have been applied for. But one thing I would point out though, this is a full planning application, it's not an outline application. So what you've seen on the screen and some of the images that Robert's presented are essentially what will get built. I think also what's crucial with a full planning application is that it shows the commitment to develop as quickly as possible. So that whilst there will, as always with any planning application, be a number of conditions attached to it. It's a full application, so it should allow start on the site to proceed quite quickly. So to say there just the various uses that are being posed, the care elements, the residential elements along with the retail and the other associated uses. As has been touched on right from the start, it's probably, this probably highlights highlights that the planning process is is not quick. We were just saying earlier, it's probably two years ago that we were all here having the actual consultation event. I think a few of us will even remember that I think the first meeting at the town council was probably even on line during COVID. So it just shows you how long it can take to bring forward a scheme of this nature. But again, as always, as always being touched on, the planning application submitted last December. It does feel like, you know, what have we been doing this time? But it is unfortunately just the nature of the system. We've had a number of comments to deal with. The key ones probably, you will probably be familiar with this, the local league flood authority, North County National Highways. We've had to take time to make sure that all of those issues have been addressed. And now we're in a position where we don't have any objections from any of the the key stakeholders. And as a result, the sort of already pointed out, the council are now looking to take it to a planning committee, which we're hoping will be at the end of this month. And that will be with a recommendation to approve. So yeah, we feel like we're in quite a good position now, I think, as Robert has highlighted. As a result, the collaborative approach we're taking with the council, just to take our time to address any of the concerns that they and other parties have have had made. Which now hopefully puts in a good position to get consent by the end of the year.
Thank you. We've got no more formal presentation, but really happy to take questions or to really read any of the slides or just should you wish. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Councillors, do you have any questions or comments?
Well, first of all, Saul and Tim, thank you so much for joining us this evening. Really appreciate it. And I think that I felt also, I think it's always a bit difficult to do come to the town council. You know, we're not days and what I've been played by relationship myself. Without knowing what's been in strong doors, but. The question everyone's gonna ask, assume further down, should get approved for approval of the United办for planning committee. In light of recent budgets and financial changes and what have you, when you think roughly you may get stayed in the ground? No one's told me.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, I'm always going to be the most sort of optimistic person. And so I'll probably be looking at sometime this summer or next year.
Really good, you said that. Yeah, so I just give those. That's probably what I need for the pressure on someone. I mean, assuming we we get planning consent quickly, there's probably a certain one or six and some legals to sort out maybe as second to thirty eight in the highways. So I hope I'm still in your chat.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
So but there's also concurrent process to do some tendering to procure a name and tractor or perhaps a series of reactors. You've got quite complex side, which we will sail the flats, the roads. And a hierarchy and a and a prioritisation to how to develop and plans out. But yeah, all doing well, start the summer next year and first occupation, probably eighty months after that, for some people actually didn't.
So. Thank you for that. I'm sort of asking this with three hats on, it's quite difficult, but you've got one ahead. So I'm a councillor, but also I'm a trustee of the Norfolk M C. And also in my professional capacity, I've worked with accessibility consultants as well. So I'm particularly interested in the the care home part of that. I mean, it was eleven sixty residents, so. I'm just interested in how you define the care home. Is it, are we talking age demographic? Are we talking people with impairments? Are we talking with bad people with disabilities? Or is that something that hasn't really been decided or discussed yet?
Yeah, first of all. I'd like to say that we definitely be having the care of people with the, yeah, with the sort of cognitive impairment, dementia. I think that when you start to see the demographics there is that is in value needs. And I think what's really important is that you want to get purely specialised. You don't want it to be a place where people feel that they're completely locked up. So it has to be specialised, has to be like it's home. So that is really important.
It's okay.
Any other questions?
I've just got one.
In respect of whether you go to planning this month or next, etc. Without meaning to be too disrespectful, the site currently is not easy on the eyes from the front of such a place. So when when is that likely to be tidied up in some shape or form?
I think that's a brilliant good question. I'd like to think is that the once we know that we've got a planning, is that we probably would want to start to advertise and put boards up there. So you probably look to sort of create that sort of papers on the front. Because obviously one just to let the world know that this facility is coming there. So we probably look to do that in the first few months.
So first of all, high level is boarding with nice literary and signage to show you to present what's coming next at Ninh. To do the site demolition clearance, so the buildings are providing the salvage materials here and crush concrete now for reuse. And then the development itself would be to sort of try and work through the site in a sequential manner. It would make sense, starting from the front of the site, to push the roads in and get the front of the site first. And get a point somewhere, say here, where we've got a frontage which could be finished and ready to sell, occupy a shop, some flats, some units. To a point, ideally with the care home, really good to have the hub to, the venue centre. But that's a lot to do in one hit. Put aside where we're going to draw that line. And so we're gonna go to there and have the hoarding pushed back as we go. So it always it'll look like a building site. And then it'll look less like a building site as the hoarding goes back, the gates go back to show more and more and more as we develop into the site.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. No more questions?
Oh, very good. Any?
No, don't do that. No, I no look.
Go on, I said.
Time's still completion, what are we forecasting at the moment?
Yes, a really good question. When when you've got open market sales on the bungalows, retirement bidding aspect of that, you're really building a sales pace rather than a construction pace. So we're a bit dependent on how quickly buyers come forward. What you wouldn't want to do is build fifty bungalows, have them all standing empty, having spent an awful lot of money, hoping for a that people come forward. So you try and build at a sales pace, you try and build three or four different types, different availability of tea, showhouse. Get the sales running as you're building the next three or four, but don't ever get fifty ahead. So we're a bit dependent on the market, a bit dependent on the economy, a bit dependent on confidence on lending. We just had a budget discuss. We'll we'll see. But we wouldn't like to, I think it could easily be a three or four year project.
Yeah, could I just ask something about about your body? So what you're doing, I mean, it's of my interest in terms of shops, happy to come and practice anywhere. Colleagues here that have been working on health provision for the long term, I'm a student at the town. But in terms of what you provide in itself and the story. I know the academy, the high school, they've got lots of students coming through and down the maybe I'll perhaps this, you know, we're kind of care, it's becoming more vocational. I was just thinking, if there's not teams, I'm thinking off the top of my head, with me on the head, it's probably clearly. But in terms of how do these things happen so students are aware of not only health provision, but what what's gonna happen in the future? What's it gonna look like? And even for the design, construction, most of you of, you know, that's a conversation with the academy or maybe we gave on presentation, whatever, I don't know. But it's that added value coming in, providing something, but. Making it, you know.
Yeah.
Particularly for youth and it's young generation, this is what is gonna be right in the future. These are things that we're trying to, Sanjay's an example.
Maybe we employ a man of Sanjay. Yeah, so currently we employ just under four hundred people. We appreciate the challenges of trying to get the right people. And so we've really identified that that engagement is gonna be paramount here. Because what we have in front of you is a big footprint, but it's a big footprint that can make a big difference. But then you can't actually do that until you actually start to engage the way the local community. And that's what we're trying to.
Okay, from a from a training perspective, actually recruitment, retention of staff is a key issue in the whole sector. Sanjay would say, I think it does it better than most. And I think you all know from what we've delivered growth and others, that we want for the same little construction side. We want to engage with local colleges, certification providers, agency providers, make sure we break through the right skill set there. We have apprentices on site. We it's not not just being socially the right thing to do, we actually need them.
Okay. Are you having to take some questions from the public as well? Okay, so we'll need to sustain standing orders if I could have a phone set for a second now. All in favour? Okay, fantastic.
Thank you. Yeah, just a couple of questions. You talked about the retail offer, but the last one, is that retail office still live and is this meeting interest?
Yeah.
In that way. Yeah, respond, nice to see you. No, it hasn't. We have heads of terms agreed with a very well known and respected retailer who I think you'll be very happy with. I don't think I should probably say who they are quite yet, I'm probably pushing it a touch, but you will like them. They're an appropriate, socially inclusive, low pool retailer. They're the ideal. And then there's two small units next door, which we haven't quite decided what we're gonna do yet. But I think initially, they're a good idea, Sanjay had a good idea to use that as a showhouse before anything else is done. So in its first offering, it will be a showhouse and office for Castle Meadow Cat next to the small express type retail. And then we'll perhaps compress down to one and then one of those, we haven't sold it yet, you know, obviously don't too. But they're ideally sized to be something, I don't know, we we'd thought initially maybe hairdressers, that sort of thing. But we'll probably almost certainly have one of them in the hub. So we don't need that there. But from the general public, we'll see what demand comes forward and try and respond to it. But the primary one, heads of terms are agreed.
The other thing is the surgery is concerned about being extra stress on that practice, results events. Have you been in discussion with the surgery to unlock that particular problem?
Yeah, this has come up recently. We're proud. It's really interesting because the population that live here will have a care package, Sanjay. And they will have care on a regular basis depending on their needs.
Yeah, it's what you'll find is, is that many of the people that what we expect. Yeah, so they should be coming from the five mile radius of Atterborough, your sort of central area. And what you find is that if anything, we take the pressure off the GPs there. Because because one is that they won't be calling out for any of these sort of home visits. And if there's any intervention that they require, we'll have trained staff on the site. So if there's any emergencies, so they don't phone up the nine nine nine, because we'll have staff there for twenty four seven. So so if anything, it would take the pressure off, it would take the pressure off the GPs, it would take the pressure off the history nurses as well. Have you discussed that with the surgery? Yeah, so last time we had a meeting, I think it was on Teams.
On Teams, yeah.
Then we actually talked about that.
We tried. At care, we're actually very supportive. Yeah, it's it's different opinions, this makes better or worse. We generally believe it's made well of that.
Leslie, did you have any? Yeah, I just thought that you mentioned about this, you were selling the puppies, are any of them going to be rentals?
At this stage, it's really quite difficult to actually say, because you can imagine is that when we start to build this out, we don't know what the total cost is going to be. So we'll come up with a financial model. So so we said, how are we working on that? So so this week I can't say that, but that would be our aspiration. But but at this stage, I can't commit to that possibility yet.
Oh, that's the funding model, it's how much we expend any one time before you get sales. If you get a sale, you go, you go to capital or seek come straight in, that pays to the bill. It's a relief. If you go for a rental model, you've only got a little bit of money coming in over a much longer period of time. So it's not quite such a relief. So it's about the strain you put on the on the balance sheet.
Thank you. Any other questions?
If I may, you, I know, Sanjay, you've put particular emphasis on having the right skills of staffing. But it's an area nationally that shows to me skills and in some cases not as attractive as it should be. We're gonna be building a very attractive site. How are you going to be able to improve and keep the sort of staffing lead? Because I can see there may be an opportunity for future employment within Atterborough.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, yeah, you're absolutely right, it is quite challenging. And so within customer care, that we have our own sort of in-house training. So we are quite well established in the Norfolk area. And we are trying to sort of reach out and engage with the general workforce out there. So it's something that we're starting to use social media to actually reach out as well. So we are trying to go really modern to try to connect with the young people. But it is gonna be challenging.
Thank you, George.
Very quick. What sort of demographic are you raising?
Demographics.
Say you're looking at a far more radius.
Yeah, the demographics, what we find is, if you look at one of our schemes in Sponseton Morley, is that the average age, you'll be probably about eighty two years old.
Sanjay talked about the other day and I thought it was an awfully precise answer, but that is your average, isn't it? You've got lots of service and that's just in sales, that's what it is.
Some of us might be direct here because.
Don't discount today. That would be wholly inappropriate.
Okay, any further questions before we close this off? Fantastic. All this has to say, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. For further updates.
Yeah. And thank you very much for having us now. I'm gonna share this with you.
All I'm doing with my listen. The boss is back, if you will have noticed, so I shall.
Thank you. And apologies, everybody, that I'm late this evening and my attire. But we were held up in Soffield for four hours, his in councillor Jay Taylor. Next on the agenda this evening, we have item five, which is public participation. Would any members of the public like to participate? Yes. Oh, so yes. And just to mention that I mentioned yourself. And I'm standing up here saying, I've sat on this committee, I know I'm as much to this as anybody else. My niece has just moved into the estate and the other side like I say. And she now finds herself on an estate with absolutely no street lighting. It's pitch black. It's pitch black. There's, she has a fifteen-year-old daughter that she's saying to her, you can't go out at night. Because there's no items to get home to. And I know I, as I said, I was sat on the planning, I sat on this committee, we said, no, we don't want anything to do with street lighting. So it's Breckland Council, so it's not a counterpoint. What I didn't realise was that if everybody said no, there was no legal obligation on any other else. To actually provide streetlights, if they all say no, no street lighting goes in. And I just wanted to draw that to this council's attention, please, when you're discussing these things. Please think about the real world situations which people live in. Particularly, this doesn't drive, so it's not like she can get in her car and go anywhere, they are stuck in the woods. As are a lot of people on that estate. And we've got a lot of new estates going up. And if there is no street lighting, they are going to be attract as. Now, we've said, obviously, that there are states. I know it's too late to go into that, um, but you just asked that when, when the values are discussed and when policy is discussed. If maybe, if everybody says no, then they don't happen, is it possible to get the. Collaboration between all three to make it happen? Because bearing in mind that they pay the same community charge, council tax, as everybody else. So you have people here who are paid the same house, and getting the street lighting. People there that are paying the same house tax and getting no street lighting. And it's just an issue I wanted to bring up. And so to bring it to.
Thank you. I, I feel like it is fair comment, and I appreciate, um, obviously the concerns that you have for your relative. And this is an issue that we have tried to address previously, and I know that when it come to the street lighting to the Sue. There were some very robust discussions between the town council, Breckling council and Norfolk county council. Who ultimately, I feel is a responsibility of Norfolk county council.
And why, I agree.
Um, and, and I think that if, if anything, the, the most that we could do is just express disappointment. And reiterate the concerns that are coming forward from members of the public and residents of that are about the lack of light and infrastructure. Um, and I, I feel that if yourself or your niece could make, you know, written representations, then we could consider passing those on.
And, yeah.
Thank you.
But it's just something that I haven't realised, I said, I'm sat on this, this committee, and I hadn't realised that was. Basically, if everybody said no, then it just didn't happen. And. Well, I can't trust, um, but yes, and I just wanted to do, put it up to the councillors and the council.
No, I appreciate that, thank you very much. And actually, if more people. That have that experience do write in, then hopefully, you know, the, the stronger the voice, the louder it is. And the more inclined they might be to, to do something about it. Thank you. Leslie, did you have your hand up?
It was about a similar thing, really, my neighbours said, but not as serious as that, it was about the lighting. Just down to the main road, so how boring it is. Obviously, it's boring, it's nice, I haven't got any. I think they think it's boring on the, the main drag into our town. You know, there are, there are no street lights, and rather than that, you're totally relying, I drove it tonight, just to know the check. And you're totally dependent on the businesses and the houses to provide any kind of lighting on that road. So, yeah, so I just.
It, it is very worrying, I will say, even with the, so the, the main high street. Um, like, infrastructure wasn't going to have any street lighting because the town council were of the opinion, it's not our responsibility. Um, it's the county councils, Breckling council were very much of the opinion that it was a responsibility of Norfolk county council ultimately, especially as it was, you know, along the highway. Um, and the county councils, um, reasoning behind not wanting to, um, you know, supply that infrastructure. Was that it is not environmentally friendly or sustainable? Because obviously it's the electricity and the lighting source, which on the other hand, um, if you're not providing the light in. As Sue rightly says, people won't feel safe travelling, um, walking or cycling, so will be. More inclined to take a car and, and, you know.
Ultimately, it's all that, the reason, and all three councils, they, they share that reason, yeah. Yes. What, what my neighbours, they're saying, they're saying a few months ago, trying to go home. Earlier today, I know, just as you go down London Road. There's rats on the right-hand side going out of town, nothing on the left-hand side, I mean, if they've been staggered, it would make better sense. But there's just nothing on the left-hand side going out of town.
Yeah, I feel like this is something that perhaps our planning committee, when new applications come forward, can look a lot closer at. Um, and I know that they are now beginning to look a little bit deeper into the applications, and at the last time in the highways meeting. The car presented us all with a hard copy of the neighbourhood plan, and we are wanting to take a. A more serious approach to the representations that we're making, so thank you very much, uh, councillor Taylor.
Can we actually make a presentation, because the Catholic carly measures outside the point of the new developments. That have gone in, where there is no street lighting, are actually filthy, so you can't see them, we've literally just grown in that road. And, and you can't see them until you're on the top of them.
Yes.
We know they're there, because we're locals, I'm actually surprised there's not been an accident. Because if they're coming into town after dark and you're not. Yeah, the traffic car in Chelmsford, where there's a lot of crossing lanes in the road, they're filthy, they really. Do, can't, can't seem to collect them with me.
That's awesome.
I think it's for some consistency as well. Well, when I was driving, it sounded like a dirt road. It leaves really bright, yeah, you walk down to the station, to the station road. Yeah, it's bright, there's just no consistency at all.
Is there any further questions in the public? No? Okay, we'll move on, thank you very much. Uh, next we have item six A, which is the minutes of the town council, held on the seventh of October, twenty twenty-fourth. Can I please have a proposal, second by, councillor Batram, second by councillor Dalton, and Sharon, please. That's unanimous, thank you very much. And item sixteen, the minutes of the town council committee meeting on the twenty-ninth of October.
That's being deferred, because that was only, that we had meetings.
Okay, that's absolutely fine, and, and it's asked that we defer that, I, um, as, as it was only last week, and the minutes aren't quite prepared. Um, next we have item seven, which is the grant for incentive consideration and resolution. I know there were some points listed on the agenda, I don't know everyone else's feelings on this, but I would have preferred. A, 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 a policy written for acceptance, rather than a, a summary of amendments. So can we also defer that?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, next then we have item eight, which is an update on the bar provision for Adderham Football Clubhouse. Um, that is referenced within, um, Sharon's part support, obviously she's not here with us this evening. Uh, but I will read this, and it says, the council has located an agreement with the football club for them to run a social. Club bar for a trial of six months. Councillors and I have been working with the club committee to look at improvements to the building, and this will have to be carefully managed. With regard to future budgets and income sources. All agreed that surpluses will be used for the good of the building and the football club for sustainability. I'm working on a new premises for the building, uh, new to heart, and also with a recreation ground. Do members have any comments or questions? Uh, item nine is a youth division update. Thank you very much. Uh, again, is within the part support, uh, which will be available within the meeting papers on the council's website. Uh, this says, the upcoming new youth premises may be available from the twentieth of November. Depending on whether the lease can be finalized by then. The Dodds Road post office has enabled an offer of four hundred and fifty pounds. Uh, from M A D L, Missa, to help to put in the premises, which is. We're very grateful for, and I know that, um, when Sharon circulated the email with that information, there was lots of positive resources from them, so thank you very much. Do members have any comments or questions before I move on? No? Uh, next then is item ten, an update on the Christmas market. Um, this is for consideration and resolution, so the Christmas market, um, Paula Ruck says in our office. Has been working very hard on alternating the stalls, has she passed on how many we have presently?
The last time was twenty-eight, but that is growing still.
Yeah, I think when I spoke to her, there was maybe thirty-three, so they are, they are coming in, um. And that will be within the town hall, um, and outside on the Queen Square. Um, very much looking forward to the festivities, that's on Saturday, the fourteenth of December. Uh, there will be a Father Christmas courtesy of Pride Home Care, thank you very much councillor Bertram. Um, something that we did discuss, um, was the possibility of having some entertainment, maybe, um. Approaching local groups that might be able to provide some caroling, or the church or choirs. Um, councillor Bertram, is there anything that you'd like to add at this point?
My parents' salvation army, unfortunately, they have to be booked, they're booked up in the years of ours. They have said to us, we're getting there next year, let them know, and they will be in touch. Um. I have been in touch with. The Elf Band, or, which I've had for the last three years running, unfortunately, they're not running an elf band this year, um, but they are still a band. And they're prepared to come and do a Christmas show, uh, a band from the Christmas past. And very similar to the Elf Band, they can either play, uh, they can either play three forty-five minute slots or four thirty minute slots. Between the hours of the Christmas market. Obviously, it comes at a fee. Um, I'll take that in a second, obviously because Pride have always fronted the fee. Because of, they've got a band before, happy to contribute towards the fee. Uh, I can discuss with them regards to the timings and the full fee, but for the whole day, it's seven hundred and fifty.
So it's seven.
Seven fifty for the whole day, yeah, yeah, a lot cheaper than the previous years, as the Elf Band. Um. They, they are very well known, we'll know that. Uh, it's ten to, uh, ten to three. Ten to three. As well as that, I will be still approaching, um, schools, the church, car racing, it's a fill-in. We can kind of have a, a nice selection, flow of different bands and musics.
Can I, can I ask, uh, before making a decision, maybe put something on the G P N F agenda, if I'm not going to notice, and the members of the council want to really consider it.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
So, there's a, a, in, involvement that might come, and less or see no past.
Yeah, 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 absolutely.
I just think we have, like, during the church, might be able to do, have a, have a land, put their choirs, they might be able to do something. Um, I'm not sure. Uh. If we could do it for free, that would, that would be my path once, but we'll see. So.
So, I mean, hardly, um, the other one, I mean, they've proven to be really popular.
They have had enough of it here, unfortunately, I don't.
No, really, I was at the same people, you know, I think, you know, it's council. You know, we're here to provide services and, you know. Entertainment, it's not the word, so, you know, I think if you can. Consider this carefully, then, well, it's not everything all the time, it's Christmas, it's cares, it's football, it's bringing, it's play. These things do cost money. So, you know, I'll just say, I think it's a careful thing, it's not, it's cost group. Cost does need to be.
Would I, with the cheque, can I ask councillor Bertram if he's. Her tempted to get in touch with the upper of the plane, so he might come up and do that.
I haven't yet, but I will do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any further comments or questions?
Are you, we're deferring it then?
Yeah, to, to. And hopefully by then councillor Bertram, we only had our first working group, the, um, events working group last week, so that will give.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I've been in contact, I was in contact with them beforehand, just for the Elf Band, Pride, because I've had them over here. So, yeah. Thanks.
Uh, next then, we have, um, an update from the, it must have been the events working group. For consideration and resolution. Um, again, I think that was covered in Sharon's report. Which, let me say, uh, the new events working group has met on Friday, the twenty-fifth of October. Events discussed were the new farmers market, indoor and outdoor cinema halls, and event from Norfolk Day. And music festival, plus setting fair at the recreation ground, and a networking event with community groups, interested parties in the town hall. It was agreed that a working group needs to coordinate any events with outside events, so as not to clash. Um, this was the first meeting, and it was really just to put the feelers out, see what the possibilities were. Um, no decisions were made, the working group hasn't got that sort of delegated decision-making ability. Um, so it is a bit of a talking shop and a brainstorming place where ideas will be formulated and then brought back to the council. And for approval ultimately. Um, the feeling was that a networking session here in the town hall, perhaps, um, early part of next year. For, you know, all community groups and organisations, uh, would be a good starting point to see, you know, how much. Involvement the community would like to have, uh, and how we move this forward collectively. Any questions or comments, Dan, is there anything you'd like to say as the, as the chairman of the working group?
Um, we've really, hey, we had our first meeting, like, Friday, haven't we, really, so we've obviously got some ideas. And we've got some lovely ideas for some events for next year, so enough to keep us busy. Networking is going to be very productive, actually. So, we don't know.
Anyone else? Yeah, okay, we'll move on, thank you. Uh, next we have, I, um, twelve, which is the proposal for funding available to, uh, source heat pump for the town hall. Um, this is in our meeting packs. Um, I do thought that Sharon probably would have been the person to give a bit of an introduction and context to this. Um, I can't think if it's time limited. Yes. Twenty fifth of November. We'll have, we have planned a E G M. For the eighteenth. Um, prior to, prior to full council, uh, at the council. Uh, general purpose and finance, and, uh, the open spaces committee. I can't actually remember off the top of my head what it was for. Um, but there was, there was one item of some urgency that myself and Sharon wanted to bring forward, and I can't. I wish I could remember, but I can't. Um, so can we please defer this item to that E G M as well, please? Do you remember what it was? Uh, the third Monday of the month. So two weeks' time.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, yes. Councillor, say.
In your best, if your. E G M item, he doesn't come back to mind or adds up, you don't really know. The insuls, every pump can go on, the G P.
And F as well.
These are just improvements to the town hall, and so we can still deal with it in the business under that.
Okay.
That committee, if necessary.
Thank you. Uh, next then, we have, I am thirteen, which is the Station Road Signal Box for consideration and resolution. Um. George, Barry, is there anything that you'd like to?
I am.
Yes. Oh, we never, we never, we never reconvene, so.
Thank you. Um, this is a project that's been going on twelve years, starting from a critical point, I'm really looking for help from the town council. The station building is down there, was the first one in eighteen forty-five. But in eighteen eighty-three, the signal box was in, along the sidings, and an important, um, development within Atova. So, industry moved in, commercial assets moved in, station road is developed. So it's a key element of our history, a hundred and forty-one years ago. That signal box was. Closed in two thousand and twelve, as they introduced the new, um, signal item. It is not part of the operational railway station. Part for the land estates along network rail, on track. The station, the, uh, passing facilities are under easy to the operating company. Now, in two thousand and twelve, Mrs Amos and the, and the Atova Heritage Group. Looked at getting the property there listed. looked at getting the property there listed as a great sort of specific building. They worked very hard on that and it was listed. So all those buildings were listed, including the signal. Now, it's a rare example of a particular signal box of the sort of thing, eighties, put in place way back a couple of forty years ago. It's one of only seven that exists, this hoop on this list. It contains nineteen twelve set of signaling circuits, which I think is conditions in its business needs. So all this building and its contents are a particular iconic aspect in history. Now, we initiated discussions at a time in two thousand and twelve to try and ensure retention of the signals. We had meetings, correspondents went over the number of years with Network Rail and with the Railway Heritage Trust. And what they had funded auction, who did fund some of the revelations that took place in the station just six or seven years ago. However, the Network Rail did not receive. Anyone who's dealt with Network Rail, that very large organisation, would appreciate how attractive difficulties to take any of the procedures. But in April, just this year, two thousand and twenty-four, the correspondence was reopened on the Railway Heritage Trust. So together with the Network Rail, the Railway Heritage Trust, we had onsite meetings in April of this year down at the signal box site, and we've had a series of meetings ever since. Really to get to the point where we could be offered a lease fifteen years for the signal box at a peppery gold rent. After the signal box had been taken, renovated and refurbished to its proper condition as within listing. That refurbishment is going to cost something like eighty thousand pounds, which will be funded by Railway Heritage Trust and is proved by the Network Rail into this year's budget of the first six years. What they need, of course, is the agreement with the tenant. Now, after a lot of reminders and correspondence backwards and forwards, right up until just last Friday, we've got the details that we need in order to look at the opportunity to take this lease. We're still waiting on a technical clearance, which is a four-week process that rather than both groups, but we have been talking to the CEO of Suranne. However, the Appleborough Heritage Group is very concerned and may not be able to satisfactorily take on the management responsibilities that formed with that lease. Part of the concern, of course, is about liability that they all are making a difference within that organisation. It's worried about the lack of resource that it itself has, not necessarily financially, but its skills, stature and the expertise that goes with it. It's an unincorporated community organization. And therefore to commit for fifteen years presents some particular difficulties. So together with David O'Shea from Breckland, and one of your councillors, and Westby, I was asked to discuss the matter with you, the town council. So appropriate sort and support might sort. So in some way of underwriting either the initial costs or the negotiation, but more importantly, if the lease would be taken by Attenborough Council. Now, there's no serious rental commitment. The rent will need to be some peppery, some, it's probably certified property here. There's no expectation from Network Rail that they would charge a rent of fifteen years. They don't really want it, but they do want it to seem to be maintained. We've put forward a business plan that would operate it as a, an asset for the community for educational purposes, for the local social purposes, which could be quite an icon for railway enthusiasts. I believe it's offered quite a few. And also that it could be um something that greets people when they come into. I'm not party to any plans that may be, you know, through with greater anger as to how railway station operate. But we know that that's important, um, needs to be developed, and this will sit on the side. It might even answer some of councillor Ashton's concerns about how ugly that model station is. So what I'm really asking today is whether the council could consider being party to that lease. I have obviously the lease to put out. I raise it today because in order for it to go through in current financial year, a decision needs to be made fairly quickly. Otherwise, there's. So nature this, that the project to refurbish the signal box to spend up eighty thousand pounds will be deferred to next year. And there is going that the risk that the funds might not still be made. Now, Railway Heritage Trust has its own budget, but those funds come in effect through Network Rail. And Network Rail itself doesn't always come in on the budget. I have not a schedule of the refurbishments taking place. The Attenborough Heritage Group has looked at those refurbishments and think they're appropriate. Uh, but of course it won't be to a particular standard because it has to be under those rules. But what I'm really asking for today, Mayor, is help. Is the council willing to help us out by being party to that lease? So responsibilities within an organisation that can stand the responsibility.
Thank you very much, George, and thank you as well for the amount of time and effort that's obviously gone in to get it to this point. Um, councillor S Taylor, you had your hand up.
I have a couple of questions, I think, um, and a statement, I think lovely idea, and I think it's lovely to retain how it is, and if they're fully consigned it, two years ago. Um, did we have a timeframe on the, like, how quickly they did respond to that? And might that date?
Yes, they are anxious that a decision is made by the length of November.
And that's next week, which is next week. And then my second question is, um, without a figure to this equivalent, are we allowed to take the tendency without knowing what the figure is? I'm all for support, if we can, then I, then I'm full steam ahead. But I just don't know without how we sound legally.
It has to be about.
Knowing the figure that we would.
I have asked Network Rail for a specific figure. In the trial lease present, it says rent, not a claim. I think legally there will have to be a check.
Councillor Wainfield, is your hand up?
It is.
Okay, I'll come to you then, I think you've got to say, Dan.
Um, I concur with councillor Taylor S, I think it's a fantastic opportunity um to differentiate ourselves from other local towns. Um, you mentioned um education, social, um training, the U C S is also trying to bring visitors into the town to um look at some of the splendid things that we have. My father, my late father was um born, brought up in Appleborough and used to pop into the aeroplane, so when he was commuting to that, the ground was still back, so, so he knew it very, very well. Um, just a quick question, and in terms of, we talked about liabilities. Um, and you mentioned about resource around skills and everything else. In, in the, is there a request around funding and the lease, or is it more than that?
I don't think it's necessarily a request for funding.
Okay, responsible liability for lease, is there any other liability system you are? Would there be an expectation for the powers of that?
I think having the council's backing would allow the heritage group to develop some of the other aspects. Because if this could be a tourist attraction in a way, it's, it's a very small building. It has a lot of very better equipment in it, we're not going to be able to show different people around. Uh, it hasn't been sweet and glamorous.
There's certainly a queue outside of.
So all that's not been monitored there. So we are going to need some, some help, I think. The heritage group needs help in making sure we have trained people who are able to lead that. That could come in conjunction with school, but can come with conjunction with other organisations. And we have been speaking with the Great Eastern Railway Society, who of course are more than keen to have some of their experts on hand to assist. That's all part of the business plan, but first of all, we need to secure the building and its refurbishment.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Liddon.
I do agree, but once it's gone, it's gone, so we can't bring it back again, and I have had the privilege of taking nursery children there when it was operational. So they, and they were fascinated, and I can see it will, it will be a real good educational source because the little ones were really, and older ones, they, it's something they won't see again, and I really think we ought to see if we can keep it, because it's, as I say, when it's gone, it's gone.
Lesley?
The councillor Wainfield mentioned about liability, and I'm thinking about liability insurance.
I'll come to, I'll do councillor S Taylor. Councillor S Taylor, and I'll come to councillor Ashby.
I, I was just, um, obviously I'm looking at the lease. I'm just at it, obviously in this one, I know there's been an update on it, but this, I've got the, the, this one. And it says tenant, Attenborough Heritage Group, Town Hall, Queen's Square. Would that need to read Attenborough Town Council and/or sublet two or something, would there need to be a three hundred three by two? Because if we're taking on the responsibility and then life, then it, I'm just, he's not having a word in my mouth, he's clear in there, I don't know, maybe he knew. Have any information like that? No, it depends on what the thoughts are, we're doing that, it's probably to be able to then sublet it to the heritage group or whatever. So could he then put in that box managed by the heritage group, just so it's clear that we're working together, that it's a joint thing, because obviously that would need to be, because we're the tenants and you're managing it, they may then think that it's been sublet or something, do you know, just want to dot the t's, dot the i's and cross the t's so we can make sure this doesn't lose its funding, we can make sure it goes in.
Sure, I understand it, but is that if we were to make the town council the tenant, so that would be managed or organised with other groups, it's really to do, but that would be crystal clear that this belongs to the council of Attenborough as the tenant for the next fifteen years.
Okay. And also, this, this is a fifteen year term, it's not forever, no. Um, I think that it, a tremendous amount of work's obviously gone in to get it to this point. I personally think that for that work to then, do you know what I mean, be, be for nothing would be a great shame. Would members agree to supporting the proposal subject to legal gratifications?
Interesting.
Oh, sorry, that's right. Right on, and councillor Tyra.
Uh, yeah, totally agree with that, was the one question, so the lease is fifteen years. Have you got any indication as to how fair or, is it a world of fifteen years, or does that not be?
This thing's probably standardised for fifteen years. Um, other than lying, something is the consideration that Network Rail do not want this. But they have to keep it. Because there may come time when it's a new track through. And this is part of their land, the signalling may need to be replaced again, and it might not fit the same site as it does now. So forever, they will have that option of saying let out, and we're going to have it back one day. We have got a letter from them to say that it's not within their plans in the foreseeable future. But that's all we're going to get, because they cannot surrender it in case they need it.
Councillor, points?
The fact that Spurner Road lost out, well, I think you want a wind and a burst halfway down a line before you see it. Um, particularly this sport, because as much as we can, frankly, it's a, it's that's where the car, I guess, looks horrible. And it's so obvious, you come to town, it's a big shame that that just went with it. And I, I would call it half the biggest support.
Well, I don't like the proposal, was there any further points?
I just want to put, you know, I was thinking of sheet as our proxy, you might say, with any legal stuff we might want to just throw on the table. Or is it considered or?
I would say the member town council see, depending on the, I suppose, the league and the heritage group, that goes well.
Yes, we've not pursued that necessarily, because we do commit ourselves to the cost of it. But we have taken sound leaps with Spire, the local solicitors, and looked at what they will need. That's also taken an opportunity to challenge whether it was proper lease, if it was just a licence to occupy. They haven't clarified this is a proper lease, standing up to that. The costs involved would be paying for the solicitors and paying for Network Rail solicitors. So there could be a total cost of some five thousand pounds in legal costs, and of course. The heritage group is not saying that they're not going to contribute to that. It's the expertise and people that are concerned.
Thank you very much. And the, the estimated figure that you've put forward does fall within what our large grants would be anyway. So personally, I'm, I'm not too concerned about that.
Will you add that into your proposal?
No, we, we don't know what the price will be yet, so I don't know.
No.
No, I haven't tried very hard to get you a fixed price.
Say that again?
The legal checks.
That was already in the proposal, when I said it, yes. Um, so the proposal is uh that we agree and support um the heritage group in the lease and subject to legal gratifications. And that is seconded by councillor Ashby and the sheriff hands, please. That is unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, next we have I um fourteen, which is the library, um Connaught Road. Uh, this was uh a letter that was for information to notify the town council that unfortunately the property is no longer registered as a asset of community value. Um, I don't know if members have any, any comments or any thoughts on this. Councillor, points?
It, it obviously was registered, um, dropped the ball that night, but has that been said about not the county councils? Obviously they're in the building.
I don't think we've dropped the ball, I think that's the maximum we could have it for, and I'm not sure. We can't have it again, can we? We've done everything we possibly can in the hope that we could have done something within the five-year period, but the other party aren't willing to sell. Not what you can do.
Sure.
Okay. Um, moving on, we have item fifteen, which is local materials and waste local plan for consideration and resolution. Uh, again, this was in your meeting papers, does anyone have any comments or any thoughts on this? One. Presentation? Is that, is that presentation, if I understood that correctly?
On the eleventh of December. Under checking that then.
Well, I think that it's, it's a, it's a consultation, and I think if members have any views or any comments, then we just make no comments.
I think we've had this before in the past.
Okay.
So, yeah, so no, no comments or?
No, no comments, everyone has their own.
All, all members may use my comments of their own.
Yeah, if, if there's a, make sure it's any member gets such things, or actually, I should send that. Okay, Dan, uh, next then we have item sixteen, financial matters. Uh, I M A is to authorise payments for acceptance and approval. Uh, and we propose this in seconds, please. Uh, councillor S Taylor, supported by councillor Weller and sheriff Hans, please. That's unanimous, thank you very much. Uh, next we have I um fifteen B to agree, sixteen B rather, to agree to direct edits. And I have a proposal in second half. Uh, councillor Dale, seconded by councillor S Taylor and sheriff Hans, please. That's unanimous, thank you very much. I um sixteen C to receive income for acceptance and approval. I have a proposal in second, please, councillor Westby, seconded by councillor Reynolds and sheriff Hans, please. That's unanimous. Uh, sixteen D is for cash, that is for information. Does anyone have any queries? None. Uh, item sixteen E income expenditure, September twenty twenty four, this is for information as well. Any comments? None. And item A, appoint signatories for the new bank accounts, unit E and network savings accounts for acceptance and approval. Uh, can I please suggest that we have the same signatories as our other accounts? I don't think there's any conflict in having the same ones to each. Um, I don't think any of us are going anywhere anytime soon, touch wood. Uh, I think that's myself, councillor Dale, councillor Tyra possibly. Do you know who it's up to to be? And Sharon. Yes. If, if, if we have it as the same allocated councillors and.
Yeah, yeah. Do, do we need a proposal?
I, I'm happy to make that proposal for a second please. Councillor Bertram and a show of hands. That's unanimous. Yeah, thank you. Uh, next we have item sixteen G, which is the payment schedule. To include ratification of ten thousand pound payment for completion of land transfer for some evidence close for acceptance and approval. Uh, this is for ratification. Can I have a proposer please? Councillor Dalton, seconded by councillor Reynolds and a show of hands. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. And then item sixteen H, Harvard Secretary of Work Stadium, six hundred pound payment schedule for acceptance and approval. Councillor Wenham.
I took my point, but the cycle shop in Sandman Park House, uh, actually does vouchers for, if, um, cycle to work.
Yeah, cranks, cranks are involved in the scheme so vouchers can be used, um, locally. Uh, this has gone through, um, the personnel committee, I believe. So again, it's for ratification. We not have a process on this and it was agreed and then for ratification, I'm almost certain it was. I, I do, I do think it was, um, emailed out to the personnel committee and brought here for ratification. Either way, do any members have any comments? None? Are we happy to agree this? Can I have a proposer please? Councillor Wenham, seconded by councillor De Souza and show of hands please. That's unanimous as well. Thanks very much. Item seventeen, councillors' reports, town district and county councillors to give a thought. Uh, does anyone have anything they would like to say? Councillor S Taylor.
I'm quite smart, I'm on safe ground training and licensing training. And yeah, absolutely, I can't see surgery, it's quite worth it, this, you know, actually.
Councillor Dalton?
Just in relation to the councillor's surgery, just myself, I've got eight items to pull upon. Uh, one of them's already cleared, so I will pull from the rest of them.
Thank you. Brilliant. Um, I actually haven't prepared a report for this evening. I have been too busy. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. Um, I do apologise though. Um, although something that is new that I would like to report that was put in front of me this evening um, is that I've received a letter, um, expressing thanks and gratitude to the town council uh, for their generous donation of four hundred pounds to the drop-in and share fund, um, the sharing table at St Mary's. So that's very kind of them to take the time to write a letter. Um, and I think we can all agree that that was a very worthwhile course. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Oh.
Well, we attended the five market towns.
Yes, we did actually. That was very good.
Uh, we were commended for what we've been doing on the, uh, market and the provision as well, five the other market town.
We were. And actually, I think it was one of the first times that we're coming to one of those meetings and Atterborough seemed to actually be doing the most and the most forward thinking. And actually, um, some of the other parks wanted to engage with Sharon about the youth project and how they might be able to replicate it in their market towns. So we're obviously leading the line. So that was, um, yeah, it was very positive and, um, yeah, very exciting. Thank you, Tristan. Um, next we have item eighteen, which is the park report, which is, I've already referenced it a few times, but is available on the town council website for anyone who wants to read it in full. I wasn't, I wasn't going to, I feel like it's nice in front of Sharon. But you will see from it that she has been very busy, working very hard. Uh, item nineteen, the wayfinding, approved level designs for consideration and resolution. Megan, would you like to introduce the site? Is there something you'd like to say?
Of course.
Do you want me to move? Interrogation.
She might get blinded out.
Why can I see? Yeah, I will move. I know, that, that does flicker, yeah, that's flicker. Is this still recorded?
Is that just this? Are you happy if I move it?
So hello everyone. Um, just for the benefit of members in public, I'll just quickly introduce myself. So I'm Megan. I'm the Atterborough Partnerships and Project Manager. And my role is co-funded by Breckland District Council, Atterborough Town Council and Tarmagun Land. So in reference to wayfinding, at the last full council meeting, I presented a proposed scope for the Atterborough Wayfinding Signage Scheme. And as a part of that scope includes the removal, relocation and installation of seventeen pieces of wayfinding signage across the town centre. And since then, Modell has been appointed as the contractor for the design and supply elements of the scheme. And tenders have also been distributed for the installation work, which have been distributed to various contractors to receive their detailed responses. Modell has also prepared some draft design work, which I want to show you all today. And just to understand the feedback you may have and also your preferences on the designs. So just to preface with the designs, they both contain the same information. So for instance, about the history of the town and also about the marketplace. And also with the images that are around the designs themselves, they're currently acting as placeholders. So they will be updated, um, at a later date during the final design work. And lastly, just on the map itself, it will be updated with more details. So for example, street names and also icons for each of the landmarks, which are shown at the key interest points on the bottom right-hand corner. And as you can see, it's illustrated by point one, which is of course St Mary's Church. So for design option one, there's quite a clear border, as you can see, around the perimeter of the map. And that's to frame the map itself and also the information held within it. And it has quite dark green tones around it to try and encourage people to come and read it. And that continues on to the lecterns, which are shown on the right-hand side. So that is information that was kindly provided by the Atterborough Heritage Group as well as the images within that. And as you can see, they also provided, um, images for, um, the train station and for St Mary's Church. Whereas with the second design, there is more neutral colours that are used here. So at the top border, there's more of a dark beige colour and there's creams throughout as well. And there's also an icon which helps to transition from the top border down to this light beige colour where most of the information is held. So the icon that's been used, um, at the top there is of course the Brex, but this could be adapted to be something more specific to Atterborough. So for example, it could be silhouettes or outlines of landmarks such as the town hall and the library and St Mary's Church. And lastly, we also have the finger posts, which of course align with the colour scheme that I've shown from the two designs. So from the information that I've provided, I just want to ask whether councillors have a preference between design option one, as shown here, and design option two, and whether you have any feedback on those designs.
Okay, ladies first, I'll start or?
Um, question two, have you thought about visually impaired? It's quite hard to read if you've got a visual impairment. That is quite difficult.
Do you think that's because of the font of it, besides the colour? I'll start this side on a, a circle, so I'll go to councillor, uh, councillor De Souza.
Can you just go back to slide one please? I think that looks, um, far more in agreement with our logo and our colour scheme as well. And it just looks far easier on the eye. Option two, um, my first thoughts, a western town, um, you know, like, out of wish.
Councillor Tyra?
Yeah, I was going to ask the same question as, as councillor, I mean, designers should know, there are the bonds, there are colour schemes that's all acceptable for various people and different levels of, it's like, you're in one area, so. Of the two, to start off with, uh, first off, it's, it's, well, that's, often too, but to make sure the designers are followed through guidance and there is guidance of what, what matters.
Councillor Dalton?
I agree with everything councillor Dale and councillor Tyra and the sort of information you've mentioned. Because we've got white on any of the background, harsh sunlight, it's going to be very, very, well, I do like him just.
Maybe we could merge them potentially, we'll see. Does anyone have any colourful notes?
Have you already told him, because I know you've been working.
Certainly, certainly from here, that one looks, you know, a lot easier to read, easier on the eye. I'm, I'm red green palette lines, so I'm fantastically happy, don't lose any red on any page. Yes, no, not that, that is looks a fair one.
I'd like to just have a, just a great, oh, sorry.
I need to, councillor S's point, where I think current green, is this an opportunity? Not necessarily now, but in the future, if we do go for the green, like, if we want to. Uh, if we do go for that green, perhaps we could redo the rebranding project at the same time to make sure that we're not. But I'm happy to go with the green.
Just a quick question regarding the new town sign. Is that similar to what we've got coming or is it just a look again? Just looking for continuity. I don't see any signs. I could be wrong.
I love branding and continuity, but sometimes where it's everywhere, you stop looking. Sometimes when you do it different, it catches your attention more than, I'm, I'm just saying, but no, I haven't seen the new one.
I have a feeling, do not quote me on this, that the gateway signs might be black and white. I, I think they are just black and white with gateway signs, but I'm not entirely sure. And what I was going to ask is, can we just have a picture of hands? Pull this one option A, the other one's option B. Can I have a show of hands for the preference of option A please?
A final design? Um.
Got help us in photographs. I think we ought to see the final thing before we go, yes, it's wrong over there.
Absolutely. I'll send the final design around before, yeah.
I don't feel like this necessarily needs a resolution because it's not the final design. Would you like the one?
I don't think so at this stage. I think it's.
I think, I think it's just like, yeah, the, the, okay, perfect. Well then, in that case, um, by majority, it would be the option on the screen. Thank you very much, Megan. That was very easy.
Thank you.
Next then, we have item twenty, which is correspondence, twenty A sponsorship quest for Atterborough Academy Annual Presentation Evening. I couldn't actually see and I might just say in name, there's not actually a sun that's been requested, is there?
Um, if you, next page. It's a, yeah, but, yeah, yeah, yeah. That is the option. So you basically choose.
Any comments, any proposals? Yeah, so councillor Tyler. Anyone else? Councillor Westby and show of hands please. And very much, that's unanimous. Um, then we have item twenty three, not community law service request for funding. Any comments, any thoughts?
Yeah, that's, yeah. As for Z, you have to let me talk. I think they get funding elsewhere. And I know we might say, oh, you, all the residents in that borough might use it. I think I can't fund it from our grants block. It's the sort of same with us, like, just benefit our pubs, our groups, our organisations. Or, yeah, I'm, that, that's just my thing.
I did actually read this word for word because I, I didn't, I didn't know about it. And I do think, I do agree with you that, um, I think it has wider funding than, you know, just so.
I think so, it's just a brand problem there. I actually, I actually Googled them rather than reading what is in the back of my vehicle. It's, it's a general.
I, I'm happy to make the proposal that we define, uh, the request for funding on this occasion. Can I have a second of that please? Councillor S Taylor and the page show of hands. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Um, anyway, it's literally, uh, public participation. Any further comments? Yes.
Um, the post office, I don't know if I'm liking all about the post office, but all the new signage the post office has been created. Is it? Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Yes. Okay, so, um, we have, I don't know if we actually put in, um, partnership bid, I think it was partnership bid. Uh, the match funding for four gateway signs. So basically welcome the Atterborough signs uh, for the four entrance routes to the town just because.
To replace the one. It says, I think it says on, not absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. So that, so they'll be updated. It will no longer include that wording. Um, and they might not be in like-for-like positions. So. Yeah, yeah. So it won't be on the new signs that go in. Um, but as I say, so the old ones will come down, the new ones will go in, but. Um, and I think the highways engineer has been consulted and the positions have been agreed, but they might be slightly different in some places. Thank you. Anything else? Yes.
Well, ladies again, not afraid. Um, next year, um, two thousand and twenty five marks two hundred years. Since the, um, first passenger car, um, carrying. Train was run on the stock in down to now like. Um, next year, Network Rail along with all the heritage railways, uh, doing a celebration called Rail Two Hundred. It's only on online and later. It just so happens that Alba Railway Station opened on the twenty ninth of July, eighteen ninety five. So that means this coming July, even a chair, um, is a hundred and ninety birthday. So the Alba Heritage Group, Greater Anglia Railway, the volunteers adopters. Um, are planning to do some sort of celebration on the station. We look after all these station gardens. Um, lions side, not so much the car power. But we look after all those. We've been doing a lot of work to bring them up to standard. And we recently received, um, awards at the presentation, um. It's an Ipswich, um, for the most. Improved station. Um, there's a hundred and thirty-six stations with, in Great Rangia's remit. And a hundred and twenty-five have got railway station adopters on them, all of our rehanded. Um, and we got sort of the second prize, if you like, the most improved station. We've been working hard to improve it so that next year it will look, look very good. Um, we're working with Great Rangia at the moment to see if we can get some, um, signboards. On the station, which we can include all the history of the railway station. And hopefully we'll be celebrating on that particular day or the narrow Saturday tour. But that would fall in line with Route Two Hundred anyway.
Thank you. That's so good. Thank you so much. Um, and congratulations on your awards.
Yes.
Just about the lens, Cal. You said, I think it was mentioned Norfolk Day. Does that normally come on the last Saturday of July? Well, that's gonna coincide. That was from silver.
It's Norfolk Day, it's Norfolk Day, isn't it? It's just, yeah.
And I'm only going from memory now, so.
It is, isn't it? Definitely.
Yeah, yeah, it's, I think it's. Oh, is it the twenty seventh?
Something, it's a specific day.
It's the twenty seventh of July. Norfolk Day, it's the twenty seventh of July.
We'll be careful to make sure the station you want done in the rut with Norfolk Day.
Yeah, Norfolk Day, twenty seventh of July. Saturday, it is Saturday, twenty seventh of July next year.
So that could be, we had, I think we actually decided on it. I think it's something I could choose the lucky day that the train ran through, but, um. You know, we were obviously thinking that, I think some of them on the Saturday.
More than married.
And whether we could get together on that, or that's what I was gonna say, can we put something next?
Yeah, that's the intention. So, yeah. Or, or even just meet up with Dan in the interim, just that. Um, yeah, because he's obviously chair in the working group, so any initial conversations. Um, if you have between yourselves and he can bring anything that's needed back to the group. Um, and if you wanna come along as well, I'm very glad for this. Um, councillor Dale.
Really affects councillors, but if I don't get it now, I might not get it in. Um, we were talking in between meetings about, um, Remembrance Sunday. Sharon has sent an email this evening, so it's given you all the details for Sunday.
Yeah, thank you Vera.
With an update of exactly what's planned for Sunday as well.
They've made a change this year. They only want councillors, Martin, not family members.
These guys are doing more work down at the stages and they're getting new signage to keep it comparable to everything else. So it sounds consistent. Could we do, have these guys level something down there for their anniversary yet?
Your first station's gonna be obviously signed.
Yeah, I can't think. It makes, makes sense to put something there that says what it is. Particularly if we do, well, the kingdom box.
It is what, what you're suggesting is like a, another, um.
If it's possible, I'm just thinking that way of information. Yeah. Because it's easy to change it if we're gonna do so much work down, put these guys in the kingdom box and we've got this coming up.
Would there be scope within the funding or would that be an additional cost? Okay. Go on, let's go twice. Okay, if there's nothing else, um, we've got items in the next agenda. I'll leave that to be confirmed. Obviously we don't have some preferred items tonight, and but we'll work through that with the department. The meeting is. Thanks. Thank you very much.